Good morning, everyone. The April 1st, 2020 Meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2. Enter closed caption for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, customer sentry link, Cox Communication may view this program in high-definition on Channel 1002 and in standard definition on Channel 2. You may also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, and on the GoVegas app. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, will be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2, the Wednesday, excuse me, of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday, 4:00 a.m., Saturday, 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday, 5:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of these chambers. Going out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace and go down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, please assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Streets. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation in public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available in the clerk's office or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please come forward and see our city clerk. Please note, if you parked in the parking garage across the street, a self-validation machine is located in the foyer between council chambers and the security desk you walk by to enter these chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine, but if you don't, security personnel will exit in for a validation coupon. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Reverend Barry Vaughan, Christ Episcopal Church, who's filling in for Reverend Bonnie Polly, who could not join us today, and then will remain standing for the pledge. And good morning, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning. Buenos dias. I'm Barry Vaughan, the senior pastor for seven years of Christ Episcopal Church, the oldest Episcopal Church in Las Vegas and the largest Episcopal Church in Nevada. Let us pray. Oh God, our great healer, we lift our hearts to you in thanks for this city of the springs in the midst of wilderness, this valley sheltered by the mountains, this place of work and play. Pour out a spirit of justice and wisdom upon our mayor and council. May imagination give depth and color to reason. May mercy enlarge their sense of duty. May compassion warm their hearts as justice strengthens their resolve. As we confront the pandemic that is bringing disease and death to so many, banish fear from our hearts. Give the mayor and council faith that you, oh God, are mighty to heal and save. May your angels surround and uphold the people of Las Vegas, bringing healing upon their wings. Mighty and merciful one, as you guided our ancestors in days long past, so guide us now. For you are our light, our guide, our guard, and our health, and to you we entrust our bodies and our souls forever. Amen.
Before I make comment to the public comment, I want to thank everyone that's joining us online today, and we do have opportunity for you to participate in city council. And I really want to thank those who have come in to see us and chat with us and help move our city forward. We're so proud of everything that's being done. We are in compliance, as you can see. I'm not sure it's quite so good. Oh, wonderful. We are really doing well. I want you to see this separation and just know that we're all in this together, and we are very much behind making sure this gets behind us. So stay well, stay strong, and we're here for you. So we'll move on to Agenda Item 5. Is that right, Madam Clerk? We have online, as you can see here with us to my left, your right, is Councilwoman Seaman and Councilman Anthony, Mayor Pro Tem Fiori, and we have our illustrious legal advisor, Jeff Dorcak. And online, our Councilman Creer, we're doing it alphabetically, Councilman Creer from Ward 5, Councilwoman Diaz from Ward 3, and Councilman Knutson from Ward 1. Are you three there, please?
Yes, good morning.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item 5, and we will be hearing from you as well, those of you at home. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. It's your opportunity to address the council, but we will not be able to respond or engage in dialogue. We'll set the time at 1:00. And no one has come forward, so we will now, I would like to ask our city clerk to make the public comments to be read at this time, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no public comments at this time.
And could you repeat the instruction you gave during the RDA so everybody at home knows how this is operating?
Absolutely. Thank you. Luanne Holmes for the record. The City of Las Vegas will continue holding four of our public meetings. Planning Commission, which is the second Tuesday of each month, Recommending Committee, which is held the first and third Monday of the month, and Redevelopment HC and City Council, which is held on the first and third Wednesdays of the month. For Planning Commission and City Council meetings, you can watch them live at www.kclv.tv/live or through the city's Agenda and Meetings webpage at lasvegas primegov.com portl search. When you get to that page, please choose the interactive meeting link on the appropriate meeting you'd like to watch. Again, I'd like to remind everybody that for ecomments will be available for public comment and public hearing items on the city council agenda today at www.lasvegan невада.gov/councilcomment. And we have opened an email. You can reach us via email at citycouncillive@lasvegan невада.gov. Note that the comments received after an item has already been heard and acted upon will be included in the record without being read aloud. There may be a time limit imposed on comments read for the record, as it is standard practice when comments are made here in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, could you answer for me as we proceed during the council meeting at the point that we have the public comment, and that will be coming in online to you from those who are on service here?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, team. Wonderful. All right, we will move on to Agenda Item 6. Thank you. Business items or possible action. Any items from the 9:00 a.m. session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken table, withdrawn, held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Pro Tem.
Madam Mayor, we have none.
Okay, that was simple. So nothing to vote on. And we will move on to Agenda Item 7. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to March 4th, 2020, regular city council meeting. Mayor Pro Tem may have a motion to approve the minutes, please.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the March 4th, 2020, city council meeting.
There's a motion, please vote. And how say you, council on the phone?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And the motion passes. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 8. Items 8 through 29 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Councilwoman Seaman, I understand you wish to make a comment, reference Agenda Item 9.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It is frustrating at a time when the city has so many urgent needs that we have to spend more money on Badlands litigation defense. But having said that, I will do what is needed to defend the city and the taxpayers and vote for the additional funding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other items council wishes to bring forward? Anyone on the phone?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilman Knutson. I would need to abstain on item number 10, as I had a contract with Nevada Hand. I will not be voting on item number 10.
That was Councilman Knutson wanting to bring forward. I couldn't quite understand. He is, Councilman Knutson is abstaining on Agenda Item 10.
That is correct.
Yes, and anything else, Councilman? Okay.
No, Mayor, I was just saying I need to abstain from item number 10.
What did he say?
Thank you, Councilman Knutson.
Abstaining, correct. Thank you. And abstaining therefrom. Okay.
Mayor, I just have one comment down here. Jeff Dorcak, Deputy City Attorney. On item 18, this is a contract between the City of Las Vegas and the Nevada Department of Health and Human Services. The fire department inadvertently left an exhibit off of the agenda, but it is in the contract, so we just wanted to state for the record that Appendix B in the contract refers to the HIPAA Requirements, Health Insurance, Portability, and Accountability Act that the city will follow pursuant to this contract, and that's everything.
Thank you very much. Okay, are you addressing us now?
I am, Madam Mayor. I just need to read a real quick statement on two of Planning's consent items, just for the record, and they don't need to be pulled off consent.
Okay.
So, real quick, on item 21, I need to read for the record that this item is for a tavern limited license under Declaration of Emergency for COVID-19 Directive 003. This business will not be able to conduct business under this license until that emergency has been lifted. An affidavit has been signed by the licensee, which I will supply to the clerk's office for the record. And so what that means is that today's vote is for approval of this license with the understanding that it must wait to operate until the directive has been rescinded, lifted, or otherwise directed by the City of Las Vegas Business Licensing Division. With that, that is all for that one. Item 20-
Excuse me, could I ask you, was there a time limit once it is granted, if it's granted? Or do you wait till that time when you do it?
No, so there's no time limit. So with your approval today of this license, the license will be issued. It just, they will not be able to operate the business until the emergency directive is lifted, expired, modified, or they're contacted by licensing to say that they're now clear to operate.
Thank you.
Similarly, on item 22, this item is for a banquet establishment liquor license. Again, under the Declaration of Emergency for COVID-19 Directive 003, this business will not be able to conduct this activity under this license until the emergency has been lifted. We do have a signed affidavit from the licensee that they understand this directive. So again, this is a vote today to approve this license with the understanding that they must wait to operate until the directive is either rescinded, lifted, or they are otherwise contacted by the Business Licensing Division of the City of Las Vegas and indicated that they can operate. Thank you. With that, I'll leave these for the clerk's office and let you move on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments? Nope. Okay, online from our council, any questions, comments there to what Mr. Summerfield addressed? Mr. Dorcak?
Aye.
There's a gentleman with his hand up. Am I permitted to take that, or no?
Yeah, you can bring him up if you'd like. We had public comment, but if he wants to come up and speak on one of the items in 8 through 29, sure.
Please just come to the microphone, and the light will go on, and if you'll state your name for the record, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and everybody else who is brave enough to come to work, like you're supposed to. You're all essential workers. I've been saying that to everybody I know in person, on Facebook, on the radio. David Mahoney and Mercedes and J.C. probably think you're crazy to come here right now. I tell them they're wrong. She's being brave, like all you folks are.
Which item, please, sir?
Well, not a specific item, ma'am. If I could just briefly say, I like the idea of quarantining the homeless. I think a better place than the pavement-
No, 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 this is off-agenda. What Mr. Dorcak said-
I'm sorry, I didn't, first time I've been to one of these in a long time. I apologize.
There'll be public comment later on, so we'll have you then, yes.
There will be? Oh, thank you. I thought maybe I'd missed my one chance there a few minutes ago. My fault.
You did miss that one, but there'll be one at the end.
At the end. Thank you very much. Come back in.
Okay. Any other comments on these? Okay, Mayor Pro Tem?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Could we pull 25 forward and have staff explain that investment to viewers?
On Agenda Item 25, Councilwoman Diaz has some questions, so, and Councilman Creer. I see it's both of you. On the inter-local contract, is that the one you're speaking to?
Yes.
Okay, I see we're going to get little input here. If you'll hold one second, please. Good morning.
Good morning. Steve Ford, City Engineer.
Okay, Councilwoman, Steve Ford's at the mic for you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like Steve, Mr. Ford, to explain the investment that will happen due to this public works project that we're about to approve. I think that it's important that the public know what we're doing to keep them safe when they're visiting downtown.
If I may, Mr. Ford, let me just read it so the public knows. We're discussing Agenda Item 25, yes. For possible action to approve inter-local contract 1166, which is a construction contract, and supplemental inter-local contract number 1-989A, engineering between the City of Las Vegas, CLV, and the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada, RTC, to provide funding for construction and increase funding for engineering for the downtown pedestrian safety program Phase 1. Improvements located in a quarter-mile radius around Fremont Street Experience, $7,270,000 Road and Flood Capital Project Fund, CPF. This is in Wards 3 and 5. Councilwoman Diaz and Councilman Creer.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good morning, Mayor Council. This project has been in the works for quite a while with RTC to provide some safety improvements around Fremont Street. We're adding bollards at the entrances off of the main streets onto the exit onto Fremont, and some pedestrian access, and it's just to keep that whole area safer than it has been.
Any other comments, Councilwoman?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Thank you very much. Okay, Mayor Pro Tem may have a motion on the consent agenda. Please.
Absolutely. Madam Mayor, I move to approve consent in Agenda Items 8 through 29, and with the note that Councilman Knutson will be abstaining on item 10.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote, and please vote. Councilman Creer?
Aye.
Councilwoman?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. They all concur, and that motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 30. Public hearing, this is Agenda Item 30, public hearing on local improvement district for special improvement district, SID, S-I-D, number 1485, Alta Drive Landscape Maintenance, fiscal year 2021. This is in Ward 1 with Councilman Knutson. It is a public hearing which I declare open, and I see Mr. Ford again. Nice to see you. Thank you. And please, if you announce your name.
Good morning. Steve Ford, City Engineer. This is Special Improvement District 1485, consists of 37 parcels along Alta Drive between Rancho to a point approximately 375 feet west of Lacy Lane. It consists of landscaping, maintenance, and utilities, and the assessments have remained unchanged for this year, and it goes through 2021. We have received no protests on this item.
And can you tell us it goes from Lacy Lane to where, please?
Rancho. 300, it goes between, on Alta, between Rancho Drive to approximately 275 feet west of Lacy Lane.
And that has already been, that's the one that's wiggly like San Francisco's street?
Yes, ma'am.
And so what is happening at this?
So this maintenance district has been in place for many years. It's basically just the maintenance of the landscaping and pay for the water for that landscaping in that area.
Did I miss the cost on this?
The assessments remain unchanged from the previous years, $75,800 for the entire assessment.
And it's a special improvement district, so the residents pay for it, not the city?
That is correct.
Okay, just so everybody knows-
Yes, ma'am.
-this is what an SID is, Special Improvement District, absorbed by the residents.
Correct.
Thank you very much. So it's public hearing. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item? Close of public hearing. And Councilman, would you like to make a motion on your own?
Yes, Mayor. I would, first of all, like to say this is one of my favorite parts of the entire city. I drive it multiple times a day, as do many of us on the diet. I'm so grateful for the neighbors for paying for it, grateful for the city and the staff who are able to maintain it. So with that, I would move for approval.
And so you move for approval?
Yes, Mayor.
I can't hear. I can't understand. I'm sorry.
I'm not certain there's any action required on this.
I see there is no action. Thank you very much. Great, it's all taken care of. We like that. Agenda Item 31, thank you, Councilman. Public hearing on local improvement district, special improvement district, SID, number 1516, Fremont Street Maintenance District, fiscal year 2021, Las Vegas Boulevard to 8th Street, Ward 3 with Councilwoman Diaz. This is a public hearing which I declare open, and back to you again, sir.
Thank you. Again, Steve Ford, City Engineer. This district consists of 34 parcels with a total of 15.59 acres in assessment. The boundaries are Las Vegas Boulevard on the west, Ogden Avenue to the north, Carson Avenue on the south, and 8th Street to the east. This SID covers landscape maintenance, street cleaning, sign maintenance, security, public utilities, promotional events, and marketing for the Fremont East Entertainment District. The assessment has been, for this upcoming year, is $100,000. It's important to note that over the last few years, there has been no assessment because of a surplus of funds in the original assessments when it was first created. So this will be the first year, and we've received no protests on this.
Thank you very much. And no action on that, so we will move, thank you, Mr. Ford, on to Agenda Item 32. Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at a Later Meeting. Items number 32, 33, bills number 2020-8, 2020-9 will be heard at a later meeting. We'll move on to new bills. Items 34 through 37, bills number 2020-10 through 2020-13 will be heard at Recommending Committee Meeting, Monday, April 13, 2020. City Attorney, please read the new bills.
Yes, ma'am. Bill number 2020-10, in ordinance to amend LVMC Chapter 6.50 and provisions of LVMC Title 19 to establish licensing and zoning regulations for ancillary wineries as allowed by state law and to provide for other related matters. Bill number 2020-11, in ordinance creating the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, Special Improvement District Number 815, Summerlin Village 25, ordering a street project, storm sewer project, sanitary sewer project, drainage project, and water project within the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, and providing other matters related thereto. Bill number 2020-12, in ordinance concerning the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, Special Improvement District 815, Summerlin Village 25, assessing the cost of local improvements against the assessable property benefited by the local improvements and providing for other related matters thereto. Bill number 2020-13, in ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale by the City of its Special Improvement District Number 815, Summerlin Village 25, Local Improvement Bonds, Series 2020, approving the form of certain documents with respect to such bonds, ratifying action taken by city officers toward the issuance of such bonds and providing other matters related thereto.
Thank you very much. New bills, number 2020-10, 2020-13, are assigned to the April 13, 2020 Recommending Committee members. And because we'll still be in home assignment, Councilman Knutson, I feel confident that you would prefer not to attend the Recommending Committee here, correct?
That is true, but I am comfortable calling in.
Thank you. Councilman Anthony, would you be able to come? Thank you. And Councilwoman Fiori? Okay, so the assignment will be Councilman Anthony and Councilwoman Fiori, and myself as the third. If anyone, well, if any of us are unable, we need to at least have two. So I guess here we are, our next agenda, oh, is it possible, where's our attorney? He slipped down. Yes. Am I able to call forward Mr. Adams if he would like to make his report now? Because we are agendized to start the second session at 10:00.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with that.
Okay. So what we're going to do, let me read wherever that is. What number is?
47.
Oh, you're so good. Don't go, please.
The very next page.
No, no, no. So I have it here. Hold on. There it is. Okay. These are reports and presentations. Agenda Item 47, it's a report from Scott D. Adams, City Manager, on our emerging issues. So please, sir, hi.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, Scott Adams, City Manager. I'm going to use my entire emerging issues report to really kind of give the council and the public an update on the things that we're working on relative to COVID-19. I think I've indicated that we have an internal team, a COVID-19 response team that we meet weekly to really address and coordinate all the issues that the city's dealing with. We have two team leaders. Well, Tim is handling, Tim Hacker is handling the COVID-19 team, but then we also have a- recovery team that's looking at our financial condition, where Gary Ameling and Tim are coaching that team. So we've, we really kind of have the two kind of co-mingled, because there's a lot of things we're doing logistically to deal with the crisis, but then there's a financial end of it that is very much one that I've got my eye on the ball of, because I'm very concerned about our financial condition and making sure we're doing the right things to get the city through that situation. But let me talk a little bit about our workforce. I think I've mentioned to you in briefings that we have now fully segregated our workforce by employees that are essential and nonessential. We have our essential employees, some of those have to come to work, they report to work, some of them are able to work from home, and then we have nonessential employees that are, that are basically home on a furlough. Now, I think I mentioned that we have an infectious disease leave program that they're currently on, and then at some point, they'll work on their, they'll be using leave balances and other ways to stay at home. That breakdown is we have about 2,456 employees who are essential and 285 employees that are nonessential. That comprises, those are our full-time employees. I think I had reported, and I'd forwarded to you, and I know the chief judge did, our municipal court is deferring a lot of their caseloads through judicial orders, and our municipal court started a modified work schedule a couple days ago, rotating employees through positions, so they're following a similar pattern to our general workforce. We had closed a number of our senior centers, actually all of our senior centers, and then redeployed some of them for daycare, for critical employees that were unable to meet their children's needs when the school district closed. I'm actually happy to report that we are now down to just one of those centers operational, which is that Dula Center, the Dula Community Center, with a very small number of children being handled at that facility. So that means that most of our workforce has been able to secure the necessary childcare support for their employees. We, I think there's been a lot of press recently on our efforts at Cashman. You know, we've, we've had an issue with the homeless community, we've had an issue of one infection at Catholic Charities, which prompted a need to stand up a facility at Cashman that we are now calling our ISOQ facility for isolation and quarantine for the potential of infections working its way through the homeless community, and so we're really, really focused on working with the county, who's really pretty much taking the lead on this, and working it for federal FEMA funding through the multi-agency coordinating committee, the MAC, which is a regional EOC, so to speak, and that has been positioned for federal funding and is moving forward. I know I personally went out to the site yesterday, and all the tents are starting to be erected, restroom facilities, and all the things that are, will be there on site to support that facility. We did stand up a temporary, and I want to stress, temporary place for the clients of Catholic Charities to go, to be socially distanced, to sleep overnight on the upper lot of Cashman. And that will be a temporary facility such that when Catholic Charities reopens, we will close that temporary facility. It was really a housing, and that's, I'm using that term loosely, it was sleeping approximately the number of persons that were at Catholic Charities prior to their closure.
And this, I might add, Mr. Adams, was this not an emergency response quickly when Catholic Charities had to put down the men?
Yeah, we, we had no time to negotiate, for example, the acquisition of hotel rooms in a casino or anything like that. We had to stand it up literally overnight.
Right.
To get it going, to accommodate a safe place. I want to, I want to repeat here, a safe place for the homeless community to sleep.
And could you tell us?
This was about social distancing and providing a safe alternative for our homeless community.
And could you tell us approximately how many on the first night, and tonight's the second night?
Well, you know, it was interesting, because it was a little rainy over the weekend, so it ramped up to, I think the first night was not very well attended. I don't remember the exact number, it was 60 or 70, and I think recently, probably about a couple hundred. So it's, and it's interesting, that's probably the number that Catholic Charities depopulated to, all the shelters have depopulated due to social distancing. We have had a longstanding homeless housing crisis, and I will remind the council and the public that we did go to the legislature last year and ask for funding to help address that crisis, and we came back empty-handed. So we're, we're not unaware of the need for housing for our homeless. It's been a problem in Las Vegas for a long time, and...
As well as the sanitation, which I know we have already gone to the mat on that, with making sure to the best of our abilities, we have been sanitizing the streets and doing what we could do. Obviously, it's an enormous issue, sanitation, all of this is about health and sanitation, so I just...
That is correct.
Yeah.
That is correct. So really, our focus has been on the COVID-19 end of the homeless problem in the community, standing up a facility that will address ultimately what we think the COVID-19 problem will ramp up to in the homeless population. Let me keep going. And a lot of our functions where we're receiving payments from our citizens, our customers, whether it's licenses, sewer payments, a whole range of things, we are suspending, we're, we're deferring payments with no, and waiving penalties through the end of the crisis, their emergency. So we are doing our best to accommodate our citizens and understanding they are struggling, and we're not going to add to their problems, and then we'll...
Excuse me, is there a number for them to call into if, in fact, you have a concern that your bills are due and you really don't want to be shut out?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And I, that is a great segue for me to talk about. I think, you know, in times like this, entrepreneurialism sometimes finds solutions, and we had been discussing forming a call center here, creating a call center, and we literally stood up a call center overnight, and I want to congratulate a number of our team members, in particular, Michael Sherwood, for setting up the technology. We've consolidated a number of employees who are in customer service and bill payment and similar functions into a call center in a former parking office across the street, and now if you dial the number 229-CARE, 229-CARE, C-A-R-E, you will get that call center, and they can assist our customers with a wide range of issues, ranging from just how to do business with the city, as well as payments.
And, Mr. Adams, is that operative only five days a week? Is it how many hours a day? Could we know?
Monday through Friday, seven to seven. Monday through Friday, seven to seven.
And could you repeat the number again?
It is 229-CARE.
Okay, thank you.
And now that's been incredibly successful. Literally, we got overwhelmed the moment we opened it. We've been adding staff to it, but it's interesting that, that center now performs, with 12 people, performs the function that it took 29 to the other way we were doing it, the old way of doing business. So that, not only is it great for response, being responsive to our customers during the crisis, we'll continue to use that after we get out of this.
And if I may lead you further along, because I know our office is inundated with calls, that we have to keep referring back to the governor because they were through his mandates and edicts, which are, he's given that to us, we cannot take care of that at the city. But what exactly are the areas, or how broad-based can you say that people should call CARE, the CARE number, to get help, assistance, guidance, and not the numbers really that...
Quite frankly, if you have any, I mean, I'm going to just go on a limb here and say that anything you have a concern about business with the city, you can call, they will direct you to the right place in the city to find a solution.
But not unemployment?
No, not unemployment, no.
Okay.
We're not...
Sadly.
It's city business only, so if it's sewer business, it's building permits, it's anything that the city of Las Vegas, you normally interface with the city for, you can call into the center and they'll direct you to the appropriate place.
Thank you.
I do want to reiterate, I think there's been a lot of press on our parks. I want to indicate that our parks are open. The playgrounds are closed, we've put appropriate signage, taped them off. We really got to a point where sanitizing the equipment compromised the supplies of materials, we had to do that for our own other uses, and, and then there was a second clarification from the governor on closures that really clarified that playgrounds were off limits, so we went along with that and closed those, but I want to reiterate, the parks are open. And we're, we are asking our citizens to observe CDC guidelines when they use the parks. You know, don't, don't play basketball, don't have basketball games, but it's okay to take your family into the park, your nuclear family into the park, enjoy our parks.
And please be sure to clean up after yourselves, so others don't, but the reality is, we all need to be outdoors in the fresh air, and we're so grateful our parks are open.
So on that regard, Mayor, we're seeing increased park usage.
Good.
I mean, America's rediscovered its parks, and this isn't just in Las Vegas, it's nationwide, and we have stepped up through some of our reassignment crews. We've asked for volunteer employees who are on the nonessential list to volunteer to be reassigned, and some of these crews are stepping up the level of maintenance in parks. Not disinfection, but just the general maintenance that we need to take care of in the parks. I want to mention that our emergency operations center is open. We are in an emergency, and I think this is something that I haven't really talked too much about. Our EOC is at a category-two level with limited staffing. We've asked each department to put an employee into the EOC, and I would characterize their efforts right now of being in a logistical support role. As we identify issues that require PPE, require any kind of support, the EOC takes those requests and works through the MAC, the Multi-Agency Coordinating Committee, to secure necessary materials and logistical support. So there is a system working, where at a regional level, there is a coordinating committee, and then our EOC plugs into that group. We are closely coordinating with them. We have our team, our emergency manager is a member of the Multi-Agency Coordinating Committee, and we are closely communicating and coordinating with the things they're doing. That's how emergency management works, and we are aware of all the things going on in the region, and the region's aware of the things we're doing as well. And then I want to close by talking about federal funding. I mentioned in briefing yesterday that with the, the last stimulus bill passed by Congress, it's starting to become clear what funding pathways there are for the city. It is very clear that there was a component in the last bill passed that would provide $150 billion in support for cities and states, and getting into that, we have identified there will be a direct appropriation to the city of Las Vegas. There's a bit of an interpretation of what that means for us. We think that could mean anywhere from $118 to $160 million. We are working closely with our delegation, communicating to the administration that our intent and our need for that funding is the same way the rest of the bill has been characterized, as a revenue ejection to cover the significant potential revenue loss the city will experience due to the fact that we have fully shut down all the tax-paying functions in this region. And as you know, consolidated tax is more than 50% of our budget, and its largest component by far is sales tax, and this community is not generating sales tax right now. So the impacts of what's going on as we speak on our budget will be profound, and we, we need that federal funding as an injection to allow us to continue operations through this crisis and beyond. As, as you know, for Las Vegas, our recovery isn't characterized by what's happening just this moment, but what the length of recovery will be after we've, we get through this emergency and, and people feel comfortable coming back to and traveling to Las Vegas. So we are all over that. We do know that we think some of our other programs will get plus-ed up out of these bills, there'll be additional funding, and areas that right now we really are going to need funding for. So we have a big team internally working on every aspect of that bill, or bills, and how, what are the different columns of funding that we think come into individual functions of the city, so that we will take every advantage for our citizens, being able to continue all the important things and step up certain operations where necessary. So that really is kind of a high-level report. Unless you have any questions, I certainly, if I can't answer them, I think I've got enough my team members here, we could answer any questions you might have.
Well, we'd be happy to take them. I just want to assure everybody at home that we are so sensitive to those who are on week-to-week paychecks, those who've been in the hospitality business, and whether it's been in front office or wherever you've been, we know, we feel the pain, and we wish we had control. We don't, but we're doing everything we can. So hang in and just know that the time will come, and it is an uncertain time. There is, at this point, other than our separation and doing what the governor has mandated, there is no preventiveness at this point. This is the best that can come up with through the medical field, and that you have time, that you can do something hopefully productive with it, but know that we are very, very sensitive to this all, and know that there is no treatment yet, and there certainly isn't a cure. So with the wonderful inventive people that we have in the scientific research or medical field, this will come, but until then, we're doing the best we can, and we feel every single one of you, as you work through this, we are sensitive, and please know that. And, Mr. Adams, you've really done a wonderful job taking us this far, and hopefully, it's over soon and we can get back to business. And all of you who are without paychecks, just know, we are forgiving what we can be doing or delaying. And if you have any questions, again, it's the CARE number, but we are terribly sensitive in all the wards to what you're going through, because so many of us also have similar issues, and the pain is tremendous. So we're hoping we'll be back to normal soon. And, Mr. Adams, thank you. Do we have questions? Mayor Protem or Councilwoman? No, I think we all think you're just doing a wonderful. Anyone online would like to ask Mr. Adams' question or his team?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Okay, we have now a 15-minute recess that we'll take, and we will return sharp at 10. Thank you.
Councilwoman Diaz and Councilman Creer and Councilman Knutson, if you could just stay on the line and mute your mics, we'd appreciate it.
Will do.
Will do.
Okay, we're having a minute more for technology. Councilman Creer, Councilwoman Diaz, Councilman Knutson, are you still with us?
All here.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, we're not here yet, but we're waiting. We're on, okay, so we are gonna start with Agenda Item 38. Okay, for possible action, any items from the 10:00 AM session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. What do you have, Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, the following items have been requested to be held in abeyance, withdrawn, tabled, or stricken. Item number 40 to 42, GPA 77917, Zone 77919, and VAR 78113. Applicant owner, Moses Carpio, at 1208 Southeastern Avenue, asks for an abeyance to May 6, 2020, and is requested by the applicant. And item number 43, ROC 78044, applicant Walmart Stores, Inc., owner Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, on 4.31 acres, at 6310 West Charleston Boulevard, asks for an abeyance to May 6, 2020. The request is by the applicant, and that will be my motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion on Agenda Items 40, 41, 42, 43. In abeyance, please vote and please post. And how say you, Councilman Creer? Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilman Knutson?
Aye.
Councilman Creer? Got it?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that motion carries, and we will now move on to Agenda Item 39. Public hearing and discussion for possible action to consider a request for a waiver and/or a reduction of fees totaling $2,332.2 in unpaid out-of-pocket costs and $19,200.56 in unpaid civil penalties for a total of $21,532.58 recorded against property located at 10827 Mystic Shore Avenue. Property owner, Nassau Gregory J. Ward 6, Councilwoman, Mayor Protem Fiori, to public hearing which I declare open, and good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and Council. Vicky Ozuna, Code Enforcement Section Manager. The item before you today is a public hearing for a request of waiver of fees and penalties and for the property at 10827 Mystic Shore Avenue. The current outstanding hard costs are $2,332.2 and daily civil penalties of $19,200.56 for a total of $21,532.58. The property at the time of the abatement was owned by Christopher and Ashley Dodge. Code enforcement received a complaint October 24, 2016, and a notice and order was issued on November 8, 2016 because we found that the property was open accessible. Code enforcement hired a contractor to secure and clean the property January 17, 2017, and the abatement costs and civil penalties were approved on March 21, 2018. The out-of-pocket costs were $1,621 and $19,500 in daily civil penalties, and they were approved. At the time of the abatement, the lien approval, the lien was approved and the property was valued on Zillow.com at $204,000. On March 21, 2018, MT Realty Estate purchased the property from Ashley Dodge but did not go through an escrow, and the outstanding liens were not paid. The purchase price was $212,500. Code enforcement received a waiver request from MT Real Estate, and the hearing was held April 25, 2018. The request was denied by the designee as the property was not in a blighted area and the property value had gone up in value according to Zillow.com to $245,000 at that time. In June 2019, City of Las Vegas sent the liens to Clark County Treasury so the outstanding liens could be collected. Additional costs of $247.97 for accrued interest and $857.86 for tax roll fee were assessed and applied to the property. On November 19, 2019, Gregory Nassau purchased the property for $280,000 with MT Real Estate Investment, Inc. as the holder of the deed of trust. Again, the outstanding liens were not paid and passed on to the new owner. The current Zillow.com value is $287,000. Property is currently up for sale for $280,000. The property is clean and in compliance. Staff recommends denial of this request as the property is not within a blighted area.
Thank you very much. Sir, do you want to make some comments at this point?
I'm Greg Nassau, the owner of the property. I feel a little, with everything that's going on, to be talking about this today is probably not the greatest thing in the world, but that's where we're at today. So, I'm currently moving into the property, but with everything that's going on in the city today, I'm part of that MSG project that just got shut down overnight. So, I'm up in the air on what I'm gonna do. It is on the market. I'm just trying to get myself in a position that I can move forward.
Thank you. You know, anybody that's in any type of business, and especially our small businesses that are the backbone of our community, I mean, everybody's being hit so incredibly hard to the crawling point. And so, you know, as another individual on your own doing the best you can, I just, a small businessman, very end-lating, very tough, very tough times. And we sympathize and don't know where this is gonna go, but we are gonna take public comment and before I turn it over and comment from anyone else. So, sir, if you'd just step aside.
Sure.
And in fact, that's good.
Yes, good morning. Steven "Captain Truth" Dempsey.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, sir.
Steven "Captain Truth" Dempsey.
Thank you, yes, thank you.
And this is kind of an area that I have a special interest in, real estate. I know I heard about three months ago, and obviously that was before a lot of the subsequent health concerns really became prominent. It was at the top of the news segment that I heard on a talk radio station. It said like, I don't remember the exact quote to it, but the figures are very close. And it said that like, I believe it was 72% of the listed properties in our communities, our community here in Las Vegas, it'd been eight months for the 72% of listed properties that had been on, in the MLS listing, hadn't had an offer. I think that gentleman should at least get, if he's trying to sell it, he should at least get some time and extension and see what happens. I think that's a reasonable concern. I don't know a lot of people that are gonna risk a lot of money in Las Vegas if we don't have casinos anymore. I, that's another, I hope to bring up that topic later.
Thank you.
Later in the discussion, but that, as far as authority to do, keep people from making a living. But I hope you'd consider at least giving them some time to see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, sir. And if you keep a wide berth to the other gentlemen, and sir, if you want to come up now and state your name for the record. And hopefully it's on this, because there is a general public hearing at the end if you want to make a general comment.
That's what I'm waiting for, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you'll just have a seat, that's fine. Anyone else wishing to be heard on Agenda Item 39? Any comments, questions from council here? Anyone online? Okay, Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you so much. Okay, so what are our hard costs?
The outstanding hard costs are $2,332.2.
Two thousand what?
$2,332.2.
And Mr. Nassau, are you able to pay that today?
Yes.
So, what I, what my motion's going to be is if you could write Mrs. Ozuna a check for that amount of the hard costs, and all of the other costs will be forgiven, and that is my motion.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to forgive, accept the hard costs.
Right, she's gonna write a check today for all the hard costs today to get this complete and done.
You did say, yes? Wonderful.
Yes, I did.
He did, yes, he did. All right, there's a motion, please vote and please post. And Councilman Creer?
Aye.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilman Knutson?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carries. Good, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to Agenda Item.
Forty-eight?
Forty-four.
Forty-four.
Forty-four? Okay, thank you. Okay. VAR 781 through 7, public hearing. Applicant, Clark County School District Owner, School Board of Trustees. For possible action or request for a variance to allow no off-site improvements on Virginia City Avenue where such are required on 7.03 acres at 950 North Tonopah Drive, CV Civic Zone, Ward 5, Councilman Creer. Staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval. This is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative of the district present? No, that will then turn to you, Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the approved site development plan review for this school site requires the construction of all incomplete half-street improvements on Virginia City Avenue and Tonopah Drive concurrent with the site development. The applicant intends to comply with those requirements for improvements on Tonopah Drive but not on Virginia City Avenue, as they've met with the property owners and they've requested that those improvements not be done. However, no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented in that the applicant has created a self-imposed hardship by choosing not to construct these half-street improvements on Virginia Avenue. For those reasons, staff is recommending denial. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard on Agenda Item 44, please come forward. Hearing and seeing none, I will now turn to online comments, please.
No online comments.
No online comments. Okay, I'll close both public comments then, and we'll turn to Councilman Creer. Unless there are comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is one of those situations where it's in the community that I happen to live in, Finanza Village. It is a horse community, a rural zone community, and we do not have improved streets. We have bridle paths and horses, and the community definitely wants to continue with that. And so, this is why there is asking for a waiver for the improved streets. And if there's no discussion or comments from my colleagues, I would make a motion for approval.
Okay. Any comments? I know here in present there are no comments. Anybody online wishing to make a comment? And hearing none, then Councilman Creer, your motion is to approve, correct?
Yes, I approve. Thank you, yeah.
There's a motion to approve, please vote. And for those of you, Councilwoman Diaz?
Aye.
Councilman Knutson?
Aye.
Okay, that motion then carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 45. SUP 78109, public hearing. Applicant QC Financial Services, Inc., owner Roberto Family Trust. For possible action or request for a special use permit for proposed 1,170 square foot auto title loan used within an existing financial institution specified use with waivers to allow 130-foot distance separation from a residential use where 200 feet is required to allow 1,170 square foot tenant space dedicated to the use where 1,500 square feet are required to allow window signage that does not comply with Title 19.12 standards at 1942 East Sahara Suite A. C1 Limited Commercial, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval. And this is a public hearing which I declare open. Is the applicant present or online? Okay, we will turn this to Mr. Summerfield.
Madam Mayor, the special use permit is to add an auto title loan used within an existing financial institution specified. The additional use will result in additional paper transactions as they will have no vehicles stored at the site. Therefore, they should not be intensifying the activities that are currently being conducted within the existing use. As such, the approval of an auto title loan use will not compromise the public health, safety, or welfare of the public, and staff has recommended approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to come forward and speak to the council? Please do so. And online, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Luann Holmes, City Clerk, for the record, I do have comments. From Erica Martinez, she is on opposition. She states, "These businesses are considered predatory. They are determined or detrimental to the surrounding neighborhoods. They are considered as neighborhood decline indicators. The service is already provided in the neighborhood." Thank you. From Lee Yarborough, she supports this. "This is just an additional service with an existing financial institution. I don't see that this could damage the adjoining neighborhood. It should be approved." From Daniel Forkerson, he is in opposition. "We don't need another lemon lot in the area, which is what comes after the loans." From Heidi Swank, she's in opposition. "We already have too many title and payday lender in this area. We do not want anyone of these folks who are just here to take advantage of people." From Mark Kaufman, he supports it with no comments. From Kathleen Carr, it states, "I am opposed to Agenda Item Number 45 to add an auto title loan business. These businesses are considered predatory. They are detrimental to the surrounding neighborhoods. They are considered as neighborhood decline indicators." It appears very similar to Erica Martinez's statement. From Fawn Douglas, states, "We oppose the approval of SUP 78109, special use permit for the Roberto Family Trust to sell auto title loans at 130-foot distance separation from the residential use where 200 feet is required. We live within several hundred feet of the Lynn Nation near the corner of Eastern and Sahara, and we have been greatly concerned about the increasing number of quick loan establishments going up in our neighborhood. In addition to this Lynn Nation, there is a Title Max, a dollar loan center, all within several hundred feet of this major intersection. While we understand this Lynn Nation store is already open, we oppose any further expansion of this quick loan activities so close to our residents. We would prefer a banking enterprise at this intersection but are not able to afford to build one there ourselves." Thank you. And that are all the comments.
And are those all dated today?
Yes, they are, Mayor. They all have come in over the two avenues that we've allowed people to make comments during a meeting.
And is there any way, I'm pretty sure in this one because their knowledge of the area, any way for us to determine when people send in if they're, they live in the city or they live in California, or they live somewhere else? How can we, moving forward with our, this is another thing we really need to know because we have a lot of people come in from out of state to voice opinions one way or the other. And we really want to make sure we're hearing from the people in the city, which this sounds like, I mean, some of the names I'm very familiar with. So, can we work on that going forward?
Yes, we can work on some of that.
Great, thank you. Any comments from council here? On the line, anyone, any comments before I turn this over to Councilwoman Diaz?
No, Mayor.
Thank you.
No, Mayor.
Councilwoman, oh, I have to close public hearing. Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I heard the applicant is not present?
No. But is the applicant online? Are you online? No. Okay, please.
Mr. Summerfield, I see that they are requesting a distance separation of 130 feet to be waived. And I wanted you to know if there are other financial institutions that serve this area that have made a similar request.
Madam Mayor, through you. Councilwoman Diaz, yes. So, if you'll recall, council took action on a request by the same applicant for a different location, a location that was in Ward 1, I believe it was last meeting. They did have a similar, not the same request, not exactly the same circumstances, but they did have a similar distance request, a waiver for residential. Additionally, they weren't meeting the square footage, and I think they were also requesting to have non-approved window signage at that location as well.
And what was that vote, please, Mr. Summerfield?
I do not have it right in front of me, but my belief is that was an approval vote. Councilman Knutson made a recommendation for approval based on the staff and planning commission recommendations, and I believe that carried.
Thank you very much. Is that your recollection, Councilman Knutson?
Correct, yes.
And Mr. Summerfield, can you tell me how many other financial institutions of this kind service this area currently?
Madam Mayor, through you. So, because I knew that Councilwoman had some concerns, there were some maps that she asked us to produce. If I may, I'll go to the overhead to be able to put those maps up, if that is what you would like, Councilwoman.
Yes, please.
And Councilwoman Diaz, I think we have some comments up here from council that are here before you make your motion, please. After Mr. Summerfield. Mr. Summerfield has the floor.
So, Madam Mayor, again, through you for Councilwoman Diaz. So, the map that I'm showing you now, this is the map for financial institutions within the entire city of Las Vegas. You do see that there are a number of them along our major commercial corridors, including on the east side, Eastern Avenue, which is right here. So, you see there are a number of them there. And as you get closer to the location for this proposed one, again, you begin to see that there are...
Could I trouble you for the date of the bottom map, please?
So, this map was produced for the Councilwoman on March 4 of 2020.
Thank you very much. This one as well?
This one was also created for her by our GIS team in planning on the 4th as well. And so, Eastern Avenue, apologize, my bifocals are not working as well as I hoped.
You're too young for bifocals.
Eastern Avenue, again, is here. So, Eastern in Charleston is here. So, again, you are seeing that you have a few of these in that vicinity. I'm sorry, Eastern in Sahara is here, and then you have Eastern in Charleston. So, you have a few that are in that stretch between Sahara and Charleston. And then here is the immediate, this is our special area map that we have that shows the location of the existing financial institution specified that wants to add this line of business and its existing proximity to those residential areas. Does that help answer your question, Councilwoman?
Yes, Robert. And can you advise if any of those existing financial institutions have a waiver in place to allow closer proximity to residents?
So, again, I don't have a detailed record on each one, but as I'm looking at this particular map of the Ward 3 area and looking at its proximity with the little radii's that I do have, I would assume that there are many of these that have received waivers in one form or another over the years when they were approved from either, like, the one that I'm pointing at here, which is, clearly has residential within its area, the one for here that has, again, residential. Many of these seem to have within the distance separation to a residential component and may also even have distance separation within, from financial institution to financial institution as well.
Madam Mayor, if you want to have my fellow colleagues ask their questions or make comments?
Absolutely. Well, she stepped away. Mayor Protem, did you want to make comment, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Robert.
Councilwoman Diaz, the applicant is a no-show, and the list of opposition is much greater than the list of support. So, I just want to say I'm not going to be supporting this measure today.
Thank you. Any other comments? None here then, so back to you, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I am in agreement with Mayor Protem. I have heard from many of my residents that they don't see that this is a need in our community, that we have an excess of these types of financial services. And in light of everything that is happening, I don't think that I would feel comfortable opening another auto title loan in very close proximity to the community as stated by so many of my residents. So, with that, I will move to deny Item Number 45.
Thank you. Then there's a motion to deny on Agenda Item 45. Is that your wish? Okay. Please vote and please post. And Councilman Creer?
I will go along with Councilwoman Diaz.
Councilman Knutson?
Aye.
Thank you. And please post. Councilwoman's off the bench in a moment. And that motion carries. Number 45 was denied. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 46, SUP 78144, public hearing. Applicant, open owner, gas station lot LLC, possible action or request for a special use permit for a proposed 2,450 square foot beer wine cooler off-sale establishment used with a waiver to allow 343-foot distance separation from a city park where 400 feet is required. At 2,051 East Sahara, C1 Limited Commercial, Zone Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing which I declare open, and I see we have a person here. Are you the applicant or representative?
I am applicant.
Thank you. And your name, sir, please?
My name's Ayrant Panti. I represent the owner, the new owner of the application.
Okay, new owner.
I'm the new owner. I represent the owner.
Okay, thank you.
He cannot make it here today. He's at home, I guess.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, I hate to interrupt. Can we get him to spell his name, please?
Would you be kind enough to spell your first and last name, please?
My first name, A-I-R-R. Last name is P-H-A-N-T-H-I-P, Panti.
Thank you very much. Mr. Summerfield?
Madam Mayor, while the applicant has requested a distance separation waiver from a city park, staff finds that the subject... a city park, staff finds that the subject site is suitable as it is separated from the park by Eastern Avenue, which is a 100-foot primary arterial, and that the use is compatible with existing surrounding uses and therefore has recommended approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments from the public here? If you wish to make comment, please come forward, state your name for the record. Hearing and seeing none in the public, we will now turn to online and see if we do have comments, please.
We have quite a few. Thank you.
And again, all from today?
Yes, all from today, just received.
Thank you.
So let's start at the top. We have Mark Kaufman is support. Lee Yarborough is in support. There are currently businesses closer to the parks selling beer and wine. I feel this responsible business person should not be allowed to do the same. Fawn Douglas is in opposition stating, "We strongly and vehemently oppose the approval of SUP 78144, the special use permit that would allow the owner of Gas State Lot LLC a 2,450-square-foot beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment within a 343 distance from our beloved J.C. Park. This violates city code by reducing the required distance of 400 feet with good reason. Because placed in a major liquor store within such a close distance to our park will have a negative impact on our neighborhood. Not only do we regularly use J.C. Park, but we so do many, but so do many families who gather at the park regularly to walk and jog, exercise, play games, and relax with family and friends. Many of these families also oppose the special use permit that would bring another liquor store so close to a place where kids play and people enjoy their daily activities. Due to the current COVID-19 outbreak, we were unable to gather signatures for a petition, but if we need to, we would gladly gather those names in opposition to the special use permit. Finally, we do not need additional access to alcohol in our neighborhood. This liquor store would be on Eastern Avenue and Sahara Avenue, where there are already three stores that sell alcohol, 7-Eleven, Cardenas, and Jake's Bar. We see no reason this special exception should be made and strongly request that the special use permit be denied by the Las Vegas City Council." Kathleen Kha is in opposition stating, "I am opposed to the SUP on agenda item number 46. The service is already available in the area through many, many outlets. Waiving the distance requirements with regards to parks sets an awful precedence. Once you waive it for one business, you've opened the door. This is a gas and service station, not a convenience mart, not a liquor store. I could see employees there without the proper training to sell liquor. For the sake of the people that need J.C. Park as an outlet, I urge you to deny." Erica Martinez is in opposition stating, "In this intersection, there are other grocery stores and convenience stores, and it's a close, and it is close to a park. It is not far from the high school and a neighborhood. For the sake of the people that need J.C. Park as an outlet, I urge you to deny." Stephen Franklin submits an opposition. "There are currently two boozy options at the intersection. Over the years, past city council has approved booze sales in places where there was once prohibited. The neighborhood parks and school grounds are already riddled with drunk drifters." Sarah Smith is in opposition stating, "Distance separation is in a place for a reason. There is absolutely no reason to allow a deviation for someone to sell more alcohol. There are plenty of places available for that to happen elsewhere and still close enough so as not to inconvenience anyone." Jean Asmussen is in opposition with no statement. Karen Listano is in opposition, no statement. Stephen Smith is in opposition, no statement. A.B. Wolkerson, Dr. A.B. Wilk, it looks like, is, has submitted two articles, so I'm going to read just one. They are in both opposition. It says, "Apologies for the additional message." Oh, I guess it goes on to the first one. So the first one states, "I stand with Fawn Douglas, Sol Martinez, and others who oppose the special use permit that would allow the owner of Gas State Lot LLC a 2,450-square-foot beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment within a 343 distance of J.C. Park. I ask that the Las Vegas City Council support our community by denying the special use permit for the reasons listed in her request. Additionally, apologies for the additional message. I'm currently working from home to make sure UNOV courses are working for my students online. I thought perhaps I should also list the reasons why I personally oppose the special use permit that would allow the owner of Gas Station Lot LLC a 2,450-square-foot beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment within a 343 distance of J.C. Park. One, this location is within a short walking distance from our J.C. Park, where kids are daily playing soccer, skateboarding, and having fun on the jungle gyms. People go there to get, to run, get out and exercise, and many other family gatherings on weekends. I have even been jogging over there once while a church was holding an outdoor service. Two, we simply do not need another liquor store in our neighborhood. There are already three stores that sell alcohol in the corner of Eastern and Sahara Avenue. If you want alcohol, you can already get that at a sit-down establishment, Jake's Bar, or in a grocery store, or 7-Eleven. Three, my house is within several hundred feet of this intersection, and I personally don't want another liquor store in my neighborhood. I will not list all the reasons why a liquor store could be detrimental for our local community, but it's my personal belief that liquor stores should be placed or zoned further away from residential neighborhoods, and this request here is within 400 feet of a city park. Again, I ask that the Las Vegas City Council support our community by denying the special use permit for the reasons listed above. If the owners of Gas Station Lot LLC want to build a liquor store so badly, I suggest they find a place in their neighborhood, maybe closer to their house." Thank you. That's all the comments.
Thank you very much. Any comments you would like to make, sir?
Yes, ma'am. There, that was the 2012, it was approved by city to build, improve this facility. And also, the, from the park to that facility, if you go directly to the building management, it goes straight about 343 feet. If you go to along with the sidewalks, about more than 400 feet to the, to the building itself. We also are going to improve the, the building's look right now. Right now, it's a gas station and mechanic shop. So it's really dirty. I don't, the new, new owner, he want to make it improved better, you know? He don't want to keep the way it is. He got to take the mechanic shop out and make to this store. And maybe make it nicer landscaping, you know, make it better as well.
Okay.
So this, make it better for, for the business.
Mr. Summerfield, can you substantiate that it was granted in 2000, whatever it was?
Madam Mayor, yes. So in August of 2012, the city council, the then-city council did approve a site development review and a special use permit for a beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment. At that time, it had the waiver from the park, as, as currently indicated. However, looking through the licensing, it looks like they decided to move forward with just the gas station and the minor automotive service and never pursued licensing to actually be able to operate the alcohol component, which is why this item is before you today under this new operator. Thank you.
And that, what year was that, please?
That was in August of 2012.
Wow.
So eight years ago.
That was previous owner, ma'am. This is the new owner of the property.
He or she fore, they went to go, forego that license to do their mechanic part.
Yes, by not pulling that license within that two years and then not extending it or what have you, they let those entitlements go. So this is a completely new entitlement request that's not contingent on previous approvals.
Would you be able to show us on the map, item 46, where are the other alcohol sales establishments at Eastern and Sahara, please?
Yes, ma'am. I have, Councilwoman Diaz had requested maps, so I have those, and I'll go to the...
At that time? Okay, I would like to see them before I take public comment. And so those are, each way, are those four lane, three lane, Sahara and Eastern? What are those? How wide, how many lanes are those trafficking?
Those should each be 100-foot minimum right-ofways. I'm going to look at my Public Works guy, if he knows off the top of his head, but I believe there are seven lanes, three in each direction with a center median turn lane.
I believe that's correct on both Eastern and Sahara. Three travel lanes each with center turn lanes.
So then, Madam Mayor, once again, we have, the blue dots represent all businesses that have approval to sell alcohol in the city of Las Vegas.
That's not coming through blue here? I see green, yellow, and brown.
Yeah, green, yellow, and brown are the actual, the protected uses. So the yellow is going to be your, well, that's the ward designation there, but the properties that are yellow are churches, the green are the city parks, and then the brown are our schools. But when we zoom into Ward Three, so hopefully you can better see the blue or at least the dark dots.
Can that be pulled up a little tighter to the... Perfect, thank you.
All right. So the blue dots are all the current businesses that have approvals to sell alcohol within their various business components. So that could be on sale, could be off sale, could be beer and wine only, or it could include full alcohol.
Can you show us Eastern and Sahara?
Yeah, so Eastern and Sahara, so you've got Sahara here, and then Eastern is, again, bifocals up. Spencer, which means this is going to be Eastern. Okay. So Sahara and Eastern are here, where my finger is, where we have these two...
Can you push it up a little so your finger shows? There it is.
Sorry. And then I have a more detailed map here that is the special area map. So what you have in this intersection area, you have an existing beer/wine cooler on-sale location here. You have a full tavern here, and then you also, within this shopping center, have a beer/wine cooler off-sale establishment that's here. So, and then you have another on-sale for this restaurant there. So you have...
So the east side is flooded. Is there anything, can you look to the west of Eastern there besides his proposed entity? Where else is there liquor?
So going east or west of Eastern along Sahara, you get to this location here before you get to the next kind of pocket of alcohol sales, and that's in the area of Chapman, Maroni, and South 11th Street type area on Sahara. It would be the next kind of pocket to the, to the west of this intersection here where this request is for.
And that light pink along, whatever that is, Sahara, what is that big long to the west there? Light pink.
Yeah, the light pink, that's just a limited commercial zoning, so that's just indicating that those are commercial parcels, whereas your blue are, your blue are, those should all be residential, although for whatever reason, that's not the color that shows up here.
But those little dots along Sahara, if I'm in...
All of the dots are a business that has alcohol sales as a component of their business.
I see, I see. Because, oh, the dots, right. They are right along. So they're really between the right-hand most dot over in that cluster to the left and the corner, there's nothing, correct? Or all the way to the corner of whatever this end of the city property.
Correct. Yeah, no, the, it's the, it's the four locations that you, four operators that you have here on, in the shopping center...
Adjacent to the park, adjacent to the park.
Adjacent to the park, yes. Just south and adjacent to the park. And all of those would have required waivers at various times when they were approved.
Okay.
More than likely. I think the, the park has been there a pretty long time, so I would...
A long time, yes.
Yes. I would imagine that all of those would have required waivers in order to have been approved.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Summerfield, anyone? Also, this is a public hearing beyond those that were read. Anybody here who's present? Closed public hearing then, and any other comments that you wish to share, Mr. Summerfield?
None. I wasn't sure if Councilwoman Diaz needed anything with the map, so I'll stay here in case during her piece of it. I can move things around, but otherwise, no, I have nothing further.
And sir, was there anything else that you wish to add? Any other comment you wish to make before I turn this to Councilwoman Diaz?
Well, we want to make this property beautiful and nice again. Right now, it's in pretty, not that good condition, you know, that he's the new owner of the property, so that he will be grateful to make this happen and get approval for you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilwoman, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that all my questions were answered by Mr. Summerfield's presentation of the maps. I was basically going to ask him to show me where else people in the community nearby in that vicinity could buy beer/wine or coolers off, say, offsite, so he did a good job of laying that out. I think this item is precedent setting for me as a mom who likes to take her son to J.C., to, when we offer the pop-up park, but, you know, just services to our community and as a councilwoman that's very proud to sometimes host movie in the parks there at J.C. You know, the landscape is very different from 2012. 2012, I don't think we saw the level of vagrancy in our community, and I, I don't feel comfortable approving this waiver because it would provide greater access to alcohol, and I'm hearing the plea and the voices of my community members. I also don't feel comfortable as a teacher that it's so close to KO Knutson Middle School and also Valley High School is not that far off. So I do believe that if people are in need of procuring their spirits, there's plenty of businesses that currently offer that services. And so my motion will be to not approve this waiver and to deny item 46.
All right, there's a motion to deny. Are there any other? Yes. Oh, my gosh.
We are ready. We just have one more comment that just came in.
Do I have to reopen public hearing because I closed it?
She said it's from David Figgler.
Okay, no, the, Madam Clerk hasn't, one more testimony.
It's from David Figgler. There seems to be some technology problems. He just wanted to voice his opposition to the item as well.
Thank you. Okay, there's a motion to deny on agenda item 46, and so please vote.
Madam Mayor, aye.
And Councilman Knutson?
Aye, for me as well.
And, okay, and I want to voice my opinion. The reason I am voting against the motion is because this is a very heavily trafficked area and is serving really only to the west, which there's a great distance. And I think one can always take away the license if there's an abuse there, but looking at the layout of the land to give this gentleman an opportunity to try, and I think obviously you've heard there's a lot of opposition to it, but it's mostly because of the park and then a councilwoman, of course, with issues about the schools. But I think if you are a good monitor and you're going to improve the area physically, counting on you to really do a beautiful job with landscaping and making it look attractive, I'll be very disappointed if you don't, but I, it may carry any way that you're denied. But I did want to explain to you, I am voting for you ultimately to be able to have this privilege because I think you would be someone who would beautify the area and make it much more attractive than where it is at Eastern and Sahara currently on that piece of property. And it's a very dangerous four cross there, so the people to the west you would be serving. So that is my vote, and so please post. And the motion fails, which means now, oh, my good...
Madam Mayor?
Yes, but let me go back to Councilwoman Diaz. Your motion has failed, and so there, I'm going to take any other comments that come up, but I do want to get back to Mr. Summerfield because I want to make sure this is held extremely tight to the vest, that what he has said to us is going to be beautiful, it's going to be beautiful, it's going to monitor this well and what happens going forward. So I'll turn first to Mayor Protem.
Madam Mayor, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Scott, but since the motion failed, do we make a motion to approve? Yeah, so Madam...
That's correct, Mayor Protem.
So Madam Mayor, do you want to make the motion to approve?
Yes.
No, you go ahead. Okay. I'm going to make the motion to approve the applicant.
Okay, there's this new motion now. There's a motion made by Mayor Protem to approve. Please vote. And how say you, Councilman Creer?
No.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Nay.
Councilman Knutson?
Nay.
Okay. And so please post, and the motion carries. And so moving forward now...
So, Madam Mayor, so there, he's on the record, the representative is on the record with you. He's made a promise to you. There's no site development review, so I can't hold him to those site things that he said that they're going to improve. However, if you'd like to work with my team on, on what those... like to work with my team on, on what those improvements really should look like to comply with what he's said and what you're asking, I will be more than happy to have someone from my team reach out to him. But what he's described sounds like beautification, not a part of the application, but he has put it on the record that he will do it in order to make this be a better corner. So we will have folks that will keep an eye out, and we'll let you know if we don't see that activity.
Okay, and you do understand that, because in earnest, if you're gonna do this and make it a very attractive enhancement to the area, and something of which the neighborhood is proud, and you're watching also your liquor distribution, that would be wonderful. And if not, when this comes around again, we'll deny it, so.
Definitely, ma'am.
Do you have a card, Mr. Summerfield, that you could give this gentleman, please? And then, of course, because you are on board through, you continue to work with Councilwoman Diaz, because obviously she was against it, and you have a small window here, but we really want to see something, and there is a lot of opposition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to Agenda Item 47, and we did the presentation. And now we're on to, we are gonna set the date on any appeals filed or required public hearings, instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates, and appeals from city planning commission meetings, dangerous buildings, nuisance abatements.
Thank you, will do.
Thank you very much, and we will go to our second citizen participation. And where's my gentleman? There he is, okay. I am going to announce the second public hearing, it's your time, and anybody else's, of course. This is Agenda Item 49, citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record, the amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speakers allowed, may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? And then we will read our ecomments, so please, we will give you two minutes.
Well, thank you again, ma'am, rookie mistake here, first time I've been to one of these in a long time. So, again, what I said earlier about great to see the folks that have come in and made it, and members of the public, well, I think there's about four or five of us left, so, and all the people online and on TV, I hope we have a big audience. There's been talk about what to do with the homeless, not just the street folks.
Did you get your name, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, my name, Michael, Michael Garwood, G-A-R-Wood, lived here off and on for about 14 years, can't imagine ever moving back to Oregon. I love Las Vegas, despite all of, you know, the hot summers and everything. So, yeah, I just kinda working on this idea myself, and I got it on the air last Thursday on KNPR, under Sheriff McMahill and the folks at that station. I think the best place to quarantine, for want of a better term, until the worst is over, would be all the large vacant lots, some of them on city territory, some are on county. There's this huge stretch, I don't know how many acres it is, and dang, I should have brought a map with me, just like they were doing, I didn't know we had that. Along Rancho, just south of Texas Station, and that general area, it's been vacant forever. That project south of Ellis Island on Koval, that's county territory that was once gonna be a hard rock expansion, people sneak in there sometimes, they get chased out. There's no reason the government couldn't temporarily seize that, pay a fair amount of rent to whoever owns it, sitting there forever, never gonna be developed, who knows, and have something, everybody, like Yabit Cashman, what I've seen on Facebook, squares 10 feet apart, bring in shower trailers when they're available, maybe if there's any trouble, the National Guard can sit there and make everybody stays in their tent, until everybody's clear, however long that takes. And for some of the homeless, that might actually be a good thing, instead of just bouncing around from place to place, shelter for a few days, they'd have structure, a place to care about for however long they're there, two weeks, a month, might actually improve their situation. Me, I have to quarantine myself, I'm not gonna infect my roommates or anybody else I hang with, I'm gonna put everything in my car and go park myself in the one on Rancho, and it's close to my storage locker anyway. So as long as I have the strength to go get water from the side of a building every couple days, I'll be fine, until I'm well. So I'd be giving up my own secret spot if we put a bunch of folks there, but that's all right. So that's basically what I gotta say about that, and if you could find a way, like Anderson did, to let restaurants that are open also serve packaged liquor, that'd be great for them. So there you go.
Thank you, thank you very much. Next, please. It'd be nice if we had a spray, that we could spray the microphones in the table after people. Do we have, can we find? Be good. Well, I mean, I think, just don't, you're already touching, try not to touch where somebody else was. Good. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yes. Well, my name is Stephen "Captain" Keith Dempsey. First of all, I think the main, most important concern is one's own personal immune system, and I actively monitor that on myself, and I encourage others to do the same. Would ask for three minutes, I do have a very important topic, I'd like at least two, and I wanted to make reference to the comments by the city manager regarding the homeless situation. If I could have three minutes, I think I can get through the entire presentation.
We'll keep you, I'm sorry, we're gonna keep you to two, it's not fair to the gentleman before you, so if you can reduce it, do the best you can, sir. We'll keep you posted, if you'll start him again.
Okay.
We'll give you the full two minutes.
That's good enough from there. He made a comment about the city economics, and that's important, and I, and he did give out the phone number, which I wanted to encourage people to make use of. And I was impressed by the way that people came with their comments on different items. It looks like the city's growing some and encouraging participation, I think that's always good. But I've gotten participation from some of the homeless, and they're concerned about the hiring practices by the city. It seems as if sometimes, in a hurry to get employees, the individuals that are hired are excessively bullying and intimidating. It'll definitely be, in the future, probably enforced through federal courts, as far as violation of rights actions, and I think that definitely could affect city economics. My main topic today, though, was the show that I listened to this morning. Oh, you may want to write this down, hopefully you will, folks, infowars.com, and it's forward slash show. You don't have to listen to the whole show at times, he started another website, banned, B-A-N-N-E-D dot video, and he takes the individually important items and shows you in more depth on those. He announced today that we're at war, we're in a state of war with a foreign country. It looks like what we're experiencing now didn't happen accidentally, it was done intentionally, sometimes by participation of elected officials, which is really alarming. Sometimes they think they're just doing the best they can by arguing and trying to disrupt, and that's a very dangerous situation that we're encountering. Also, you can go to newswars.com, you can go to GCNlive.com...
I'm sorry, I'm very sorry, sir, but thank you.
I thought that was a minute.
No, you had two, I gave you extra back, you had two and a half minutes, actually.
Oh.
So we thank you very, very much, and appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Yes, we do have comments coming from our city clerk, Holmes.
We do, thank you. Luanne Holmes, city clerk, for the record. We have Alison Chambers. On Item 49, she would like to register a protest. She stated, "We do not need to make it easier for drunk directors to get booze, and we do not need any more predator lenders taking advantage of our neighborhoods." Item 49, Jaclyn Malloy would like to protest. Kim Brady Nichols stated, "This meeting seems to be out of compliance with the governor's ban on public gatherings. Even your council has more people than should be gathered during this pandemic. Please, for the sake of all, do not open the meeting to the public, stay home for Nevada." Kathy Kenny Reschek stated, "This news article linked below is appalling. We have homeless sleeping in squares six feet apart from one another, and we consider this humane. During these hard times, we need to set a better example as a city. Since nobody's traveling and hotels are empty, couldn't this be a solution? This topic needs to be discussed tomorrow morning." We have a very large link that we will have as part of our record, people can get on there and look at that if they'd like. Fortina Acosta has a very lengthy comment, I'll read part of it and give you a link. It states, "Dear city council members, I hope you are all doing well. The University of Nevada in Las Vegas has taken the state lead in a unique major national climate education initiative called Solve Climate by 2030, organized by the Bard Center for Environmental Policy. As the Nevada's coordinator of this virtual event and UNLV Students Sustainability Council grad representative, I'd like to invite you to attend this national dialogue. COVID-19 has shown how fragile our health and economic systems are to extreme events. Our scientists have also told us clearly that unchecked climate change will turn our lives into a series of unending extreme events: floods, droughts, rising seas, pests and disease, more extreme storms and hurricanes, leaving hundreds of millions of people homeless and on the move. The details of the meetings are, is, it's on Tuesday, April 7th, at UNLV. There'll be one of 52 universities, one in every state of the country, focused on ambitious but feasible state and local solutions to help solve climate by 2030. On that date, we'll find three big things that need doing in your state if we really aim to stop climate change." And the link that they have listed for the Nevada Power Dialogue is www.facebook.com/unlvssc, and again, we will link all this documentation as part of the minutes. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much, and I see we have one more gentleman here, please state your name for the record, make your comments, we'll give you two minutes.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of the council, my name is Scott Edwards, and I'm the president of the Las Vegas Peace Officers Association. I represent the nearly 240 correctional officers and sergeants working at the City of Las Vegas jail. We are also proud members of the Nevada Law Enforcement Coalition, which represents over 10,000 sworn officers through the state of Nevada. I come to you today to highlight the commitment by the members of the LVPOA to serve the residents of Las Vegas. Every day, my members enter the jail, not knowing if they will be, or in some cases, if they have been, exposed to tuberculosis, hepatitis, and now the COVID-19, to name a few. Every day, my members leave work wondering if they're exposed to something that they could carry home to their loved ones. As a father of three metro police officers and one City of Las Vegas firefighter, I am grateful for the men and women who put their lives on the line every day. These brave men and women do not know if they will come home to their families at the end of their shift, whether it is the recent NHP Sergeant Benjamin Jenkins, who was tragically murdered this past weekend while helping what he believed a citizen in distress, our very own correctional officer, Kyle Ing, who suffered a heart attack after dealing with a mentally ill inmate. During these tough times, my members are committed to doing their job for the City of Las Vegas and the citizens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and the sadness that has befallen us all on the loss of these two great men. Certainly, your colleague, Ang, we do recall, so sadly, and the tragic loss of Sergeant Jenkins just so recently, just unnecessary sickness that's out there. And thank you for coming forward, we appreciate all that you do in your entire body that helps us and keeps us all safe, so thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am, I'll share that with my members, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm gonna close public hearing then, no more, anymore, nothing? I will close then the public comment, and we'll move on to Agenda Item 50, council member recognition. Comments made by individual council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Members of the council, I'm gonna ask Councilman Anthony, please to make a plea on behalf of the census, that people should be filling it out and what it can mean to us.
Yeah, actually, I filled out the census online a couple days ago, and it took me five minutes. So it's very easy, go online, you can get it done. It's important that members of Nevada be counted, so please go online, fill out your census, it's very easy, and it's important to our state. Thank you.
And it does mean obvious funding as well. I mean, for every person that doesn't fill out the form and count the people in their homes, we lose money, and it's very desperately needed now, obviously, more than ever, because of this epidemic and pandemic. So, Councilwoman, do you have any comments you wish?
I do. I do, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, are we gonna bring up the slides? During this time, we're having a blood shortage, and we were gonna talk about the drive that was gonna be happening on April 10th at ICLV, but we were just informed that they filled it up already. So I want to thank everyone for coming out and giving blood during this time, because it's, the supplies are down, and it's needed. And even though that one is full, you can go online to redcrossblood.org to sign up to do it at a different facility. They are using social distancing and taking all the precautions, so I just want you to know that. And during this time, I know a lot of people have had questions regarding things that pertain to the city. If you are in Ward II, you can contact my office at 702-229-2420, or you can email us at ward2lasvegasnevada.gov. And for general city Las Vegas information, you can call 702-229-CARE, or visit lasvegasnevada.gov/coronavirus. We're asking everyone to stay safe during this time, and we are open for business at the city and here to help you. So you can also follow my social media, which gives updates, both, I mean, all Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram are @VictoriaDSeaman. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before I turn to Mayor Pro Tem and I make comments, I'm gonna turn to those online. Councilman Creer, any comments for our public, please?
Uh, no, ma'am.
Councilwoman Diaz?
Yes, Mayor, I believe I have some slides.
Yep, there they come.
Okay. And since there's a lag, just bear with me from what I can see versus what I can hear. So the first slide is to bring to light that the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada wants to help keep our senior community well-nourished and safe during the COVID-19 crisis. The RTC is expanding services on all 12 of its Silver Star routes with more pickup locations. And so Silver Star is an amazing transportation service that RTC offers to our seniors 60 and above. For more information, you can go to the website, rtc-SNV.com, or call 702-228-4800, and they're also assisting with food deliveries. And if you'd like to contact Three Square about that, call 702-765-4030. The next slide, I believe, is... Today, a census data slide, Councilwoman Anthony just mentioned, our responses matter, it takes less than 10 minutes online, and it's easy, or if you're a paper kind of person, many of us receive the paper form in our mailbox already, so make sure you fill that out and mail it back, because the responses that you provide help direct funding for our community services, and our community is counting on you, so make sure you get counted and everyone around you as well. The last thing I'd like to highlight today is that our awesome city staff, our city manager, and all directors have been working so expeditiously on the needs of our community, and I'd like to highlight the Business Protection Program that the EUD staff came up with. The City of Las Vegas is offering grants of up to 2,000 to businesses in the city's redevelopment area to reimburse expenses for securing buildings. The Business Protection Program will run through the current shutdown of nonessential businesses, and work must be completed during the shutdown. To qualify, the securing of the building must include a decorative facade, and representatives from the Office of Economic and Urban Development must inspect the work. If you have any questions, call 702-229-6865, or visit lasvegasnevada.gov. And that is it, Mayor. I hope everybody's staying healthy and safe.
Thank you, and again, that was the Business Protection Program, they should call when they call that number. They should call when they called that number, Councilwoman, is that correct?
Yes.
So that...
The $2,000 in securing their nonessential businesses during the shutdown.
So what you're saying, and I just don't want to misquote this, because I know people are watching and listening, small business owners in this city to help board them up and protect them from vandalism, or any entry, or anything like that, this is what those funds are directed towards? Is that correct?
Correct. And they have to do something to artistic, to liven up the boards. It can't just be the plain boards, something has to be painted on them to make them look decorative.
If you would, I'm going to ask Mr. Scott, Brian Scott, to comment. He's legal staff, but just to make sure this is very, very clear.
And maybe the city manager could correct me if I'm incorrect, but it's only in the redevelopment area, correct?
So could you restate the question?
It's only in the redevelopment area that we're offering this business protection program.
Yeah, the VIP program is using redevelopment agency funds and only available in the redevelopment area. Correct.
So for any help on that, just be sure you either call in and ask, or look on maps that the city has available that shows the redevelopment area. These are special funds that have already been set aside that are available, but you can avail yourself. I don't know what the limit is beyond 2,000, correct?
Yeah, and I should, there's a different name for the program. Help me out.
Business Protection Program.
Yeah, so it's not the VIP program, but it is funded with redevelopment agency funds.
And I just got a text that, boy, are our people on top of everything that's going on. Yes, it's a Business Protection Program and only in the redevelopment area. So the map is available, please look, and thank you, Councilwoman, that's so important. And that is...
Mayor, this is Jorge, Jorge Cervantes.
Yes, please.
And just to clarify, it's only in place during the duration of the emergency shutdown. So time limit is between March 1st and the duration of the emergency shutdown.
Okay, so in the duration of the emergency shutdown only, special for that program. So thank you, and do call, and thank you, Councilwoman, that was a tremendous help, and do remember your census. Now, Councilman Knutson.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And this is a very unusual time, so my appreciation for those councilmembers on the phone and those councilmembers that are there at the council meeting, as well as all the staff who are, who are working to make the city run. I wanted to, at this point in time, I wanted to note that I'm very grateful to Governor Sislack, Attorney General Ford, and Treasurer Coenine for putting a moratorium on evictions in the state of Nevada. This is an extremely tough time for everyone, and no one should be worried about whether or not they will be able to stay in their homes while they stay home for Nevada. Residents and businesses are able to call Attorney General Ford's office if their landlord is still trying to evict them, but I want to let the public know that my office is also here to assist and help. Although the city does not participate in the eviction process, we do participate in city licensing, and I will not tolerate predatory businesses in my ward. We are all in this together, and we'll get through this together. For anybody that wants to talk to me personally, my phone number is 702-493-1547. And I stay very active, working with the constituents in my ward and now the constituents of this community to make sure that we come through this together. So again, Mayor, thank you very much, and thank you to the city staff for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Councilman. And Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're not up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to reiterate, as our Madam Mayor has stated for the census, I filled it out. It literally, you know, it took less than 10 minutes. These are important questions, because it's about our funding for the state. So, I know the census mail pieces that we get in the mail look like junk mail, but they're not. They have a specific number that you'll need to enter online, so please, complete your census 2020. All of my events will be in accordance with all of the distance separations, all of the less than 10 people. On this Friday, April 17th, from 9:00 to 10:00, we're going to be outside of the YMCA as we were last month. We had two people come. Just to make sure, if any of our neighbors need help for their neighbors, we have bags prepared of goodies and food. We delivered 100 bags to the homeless, and we are preparing right now for our Easter celebration in a bag. We are calling it the Hop Through, and that's going to be Saturday, April 11th. Because of this CDC and the distancing and not having social gatherings, we have flipped our Easter celebration into a hop through. So we're going to have our Easter bunny there, we're going to have thousands of bags for family bags of Easter, and you're going to drive through the cones, and we're going to literally, with gloves on, hand you your Easter in a bag, and each bag is for a family of four. So if you have a family of eight, you'll have two bags. The bags are filled with Easter eggs for you to hide, and schmores, and treats, and chocolates, and Rice Krispies, and coloring things. We're going to also have a coloring contest. So, through this time, we still want people to know we are celebrating our holidays. So join me on April 11th at the Mountain Ridge Park. There'll be cones and directives to drive through, and we can have Easter in a bag. I am excited to announce that we have located our beautiful Mariah Rodriguez, which is really amazing. She was only 13, and we have located her. Now we are looking for Diamond Poulshur. She's 15. She's 5'5", 125 pounds. She was last seen in the area of Missouri Avenue and Boulder Highway. She was wearing dark sweatpants and a red shirt. Please call Metro Police at 702-828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers at 702-458-7009. We are also looking for Cheyenne Keo, who's 17 years old. She's 5'6". She weighs about 215 pounds. She's Hawaiian-American, and she was last seen in the area of Silverado Ranch in Bermuda, last seen wearing a jumpsuit with a blue jean jacket. She can be carrying a backpack, maybe, so please, let's look for Cheyenne and call Metro Police at 702-828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers at 702-458-7009. Some of our Corridor of Hope homeless success stories. We have Doyle Myers here. The City of Las Vegas Courtyard Homeless Resource Center came into contact with Mr. Myers when he was displaced from his apartment at Alpine Village due to a fire. The courtyard assisted Mr. Myers with getting into the city's flexible housing program. This prevented him from becoming homeless and provided the courtyard case managers an opportunity to help develop a case plan that would get him back on his feet. Mr. Myers had no identification or even a change of clothes, and had lost all his possessions. After assessing his situation, the courtyard team provided him the services needed to regain his identity. The team also assisted with new clothing and other household goods that he lost from the fire. Mr. Myers was transitioned out of the temporary flexing housing program into permanent housing of his own, and is currently living independently as of February 2020. I also want to reiterate one more time, our heart and prayers go out to Sergeant Jenkins of the Nevada Highway Patrol. This was a senseless murder, and we just want Northern Nevada to know that Southern Nevada love and care for them. And our mayor, our Madam Mayor, lit our city up blue in honor of him, and that was really, really fabulous. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. All I can say in this concluding moment of this city council meeting, I appreciate all your participation or watching us, whether you're at home, or if you're at a relative's house and staying there, hopefully with your distancing. This is in a unique time, it's never happened before in this country, or probably in this world, but we each can make a difference, and I think it's sensitivity to others realizing so many are caught in the web of unemployment, and really looking at how they possibly can get through each week at a time. And we have a ways to go, because the President and our Governor has dictated that that will continue to the 30th of April. So there are positive things that we can be doing, and not focusing on me, I, my, but thinking about ways we can make a difference for somebody else. And so I ask you all to join with us. We come into work every day, we're on a schedule. No, we take our jobs very seriously, and we keep our distance separation, and we are on the phones all the time answering. We wish we had answers for you. We don't. This came down from the top of our state, and it was a time that would assure us of financial help to help bail us out of this horrible pandemic. And we treasure each one of the people that live in our community, and we know that the time will come. We need to figure a way for future prevention, for treatment, and finally, for cure. And until those are in place, there is no assurance that we are not going to have a long, long ride here. We appreciate our hotels, especially those that are privately owned, that have had to shut down, and are broken to tears of all those they've had to let out of work. The privately owned hotels that are owned by individuals or a family. Not to say that the big corporate structures aren't the same, but they're worldwide. These are hotels that are in our community. These small businesses are just the same. And when you lose your business, you've put your life earnings into and built for your family, it's a crushing time. So think, when you think about your own woes and how bad it is for you, remember, there are others too. And what we need to be able to do is be strong, find a rainbow out there in the sky. And know, this is Las Vegas, Nevada, and we together are going to go ahead and move on. I want to thank our team, our city manager. We're keeping those parks open. You need to be outside and breathe some fresh air, keeping your distances, and look for something that's beautiful, whether it's a buttercup in the field or a four-leaf clover. They're there, and we're going to get there. So for our staff, our IT that's come in, our marshals that are always here, all of our staff that works here and has children they love and adore, and family members, we are one people here, and so all of us together can make a difference and be sensitive to those who are really, really closed out now. So I want to thank you. I know we'll get there. I have total confidence in what we're doing and how here in the city. This is a body of people that are working so hard to respond to you, tell you where you can find help. And most of it, sadly, the unemployment and edicts that are coming down, those are not within our purview to control. So just stay well, stay healthy, take care of your grandparents, for sure, and don't let any cold or sniffle get next to them. But no, we will come over this. There will be a wonderful new day here in Las Vegas. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Has left the conference.
Brian Keaton.
Has left the conference.
Councilwoman Diaz?